So, welcome, everybody, to the Gurnee Town Hall. We don't have a ton of these, but this certainly seems like an appropriate one to have. And today is September 30th. We are streaming live so that people outside of us can see what's going on as well. And today's topic is going to be about east side improvements. And that's something that we've been concentrating more lately. I'm sure that those that are here are just aware of some of the issues that have come up and kind of going back and forth between pads and fair bridge and things like that. We're hoping that those issues we can hopefully put behind us and spend some time on talking about what east side improvements that you'd like to see. The purpose of having this is really collaboration. It's really working together is that you're going to hear tonight from staff and then you'll hear from you. You'll be able to ask questions unlike in a normal board meeting. We have that ugly rule that some would say is that during public comment, you can talk to us and then we don't say anything back to you. So tonight, that'll be different. You'll hear responses back from staff from the questions that you have to ask. And I'm just going to give you the general flow of tonight, try to have some flexibility in that. So to start off, the police department is going to have a presentation from Deputy Chief Jeremy Gahn, and that'll go 15, 20 minutes or so. And then there's a number of questions that have been submitted to us via email. And we're going to spend some time through staff answering those questions based on the areas that those questions came in on. So for instance, Ellen Dean will be talking about business areas and she's the Economic Development Director. David Ziegler will be responding to questions about community development. Then there'll be responses from Heather Glon about just issues with regard to Public Works and Nick Leach as well, who's our village engineer. So what I'll do is that when they answer those questions best they can for the ones that have been emailed, there'll be a time where we'll then open it up to the public. And what I'll do is that I'll just ask you to raise your hand. I'll come around and offer you a microphone to ask your question. And then whoever in staff would be most appropriate to respond to that, then I will then point them out and they'll provide a response best they can. After that's happened, once that's concluded, we're then going to move to a time where trustee Karen Thorstensen, as well as Art Stevens, who's been working with a neighborhood group, they are going to walk through a process, you can see some of these pads up here, in which they're going to invite you to come up and talk to you about some of the improvements you'd like to see and they'll take you through those steps. And that's something that we'd like to, obviously, we're capturing the sound, but we'll also capture what's going on the boards as well. So that's something that we can take back to staff since staff is the ones that are able to walk these out. You know, I'm not a policeman. I'm not a Public Works person, so I don't know exactly when you say, "I'd like to have a stop sign at this certain location." Well, is that appropriate? Will that help the police department out? Is that possible to be done through Public Works? Is that our street? So those are all answers that they would have, and those are good questions and good observations on your part. So tonight, I hope that there's a marrying of those two things, that we can hear what you think is important, they can provide some answers to questions, and then ultimately there's a neighborhood group that has been formed, members of largely the east side, that will be putting together recommendations to the village board. So tonight will be a major part of them being able to hear what residents in this area are concerned about and ultimately work through recommendations that can be made to the village board in terms of steps that the village employees can figure out, how do we accomplish that, right, with their expertise? Tonight will go from 7:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. The last portion, which would be with Art and Karen, can be a little more flexible in terms of length of time, but we're really looking to end it around nine to honor your time and to honor, you know, staff time as well. Staff will be here for all the questions and for the presentations during the time in which these items are being put up on the board. A number of staff will probably leave at that time. I'll remain, take notes, and just follow through on best I can in terms of trying to understand what people on the street are looking for. And it's kind of a unique perspective, right? Because I can tell you that I understand what it's like to live on the east side or what it's like to live on the west side, but I don't live on the east side, so I don't know. I don't, day to day, I don't have my children going out to the playgrounds, those kind of things. So when I hear those things from you, that's important to me, and that needs to be made loud and clear to us. And to me, this seems like the best forum for that. And then ultimately, when it gets to the east side commission, which is this neighborhood group, as a little smaller group, it'd be tougher that if this was the group trying to arrive with recommendations when there's 50, 60, 70 of you versus 10, 12, is there how many in the group? Fifteen? Fifteen of the neighbors? That's just a little bit easier to come up with recommendations, a little easier for us to be able to take that information down. So enough of me talking. So what we're going to start with is with the police department. Again, there wouldn't be, there won't be questions during their presentations. There's going to be a block of time where you'll be able to answer questions once we get through the four presenters in terms of what each department's going to talk about. So to start with Deputy Chief Jeremy Gahn.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I'm Jeremy Gahn. I'm the deputy chief for the Gurnee Police Department. So what that entails is that I oversee the 70-ish sworn officers at the police department and all police operations. So hopefully by the end of the night, either I or this other officers here from our team can answer any questions that you have or concerns. So just a little bit about how we police in Gurnee, just so you're aware. The village is divided into four districts, with District 1 and 3 is primarily, it's all the east side. So although a lot of the meetings, you've talked about everything east of 41, for us, everything east of 21 is how the town is divided up for our police districts. For each district, there's a squad car. So District 1 will have a squad car, District 3 will have a squad car. And then we also have a District 11 car, which goes between those two districts, and then a cover car. So at any given time, there's about four officers in this side of town on the east side. And that's not including our visitor-oriented policing team, who is now back up and running. That involves two officers that are specially assigned to tackle a problem, an issue, something in our retail corridor. So they spend a lot of time on the east side. Districts 4 and 2, they also have their own squad cars, officers assigned over there, and then a District 12 car, which oversees the west side. And primarily, the stuff I'm going to be talking about is just this area right here on the east side, which is everything east of 41. All right, on the traffic safety side, I'm going to try to answer some of the concerns that were brought forward, and then I'm sure you'll have some more for the question and answer portion. But you probably have been seeing some of these electronic speed signs. The one on the left is our mobile one that goes around, and then we have 11 of the digital ones on the right. We have three of those on the east side, east of 41 right now. Not only do they show the speed as the cars are passing it, but it also collects data for us. So we can go and collect that data anytime we want to kind of see where the speed problems are. We've worked with, just to go along with this, in the last six to eight months, we've worked with Public Works to clear branches from four different speed signs that were covered up. We added, we recommended the adding of six more locations, and then there was three locations that had missing speed signs. So we want to make sure that there's a speed sign on every spot there's supposed to be. So a little bit about the digital speed signs. Some of the data that we've collected, I'm just going to give you two streets right now. So we have one on Florida and we have one on Magnolia. And just some of the data for the residents here. On Florida Avenue, for a one-month timeframe, there's 4,500 vehicles that pass that speed sign. Okay, that's, we have an average speed out of 4,000 vehicles, 4,500 vehicles, an average speed of 22 miles per hour. 14 vehicles hit 40 to 47 miles per hour. So out of 4,500, 14 vehicles hit 40 to 45, so 0.3%. And all the top speeders were about around 5:00 a.m. in the morning. So that's when we're seeing that. On Magnolia, there's significantly more vehicles there, 21,000 vehicles in a one-month timeframe go up and down Magnolia.
There's two of those.
What's that?
There's two of those.
There is, correct, yep. Out of the 21,000 vehicles, still the average speed is about 23 miles per hour. 15 vehicles, we got going 37 to 55 with 55 being the top speed. So that's 0.07% with that 15 vehicles. The top speed again with 55 was at 4:00 a.m. So we do see the onesies and twosies speeding, and we do have traffic enforcement that we do traffic details out there. We try to pick the times, but when you're looking at 14 to 20 vehicles a month, we got to, you know, and if it's the same person, we try to cite them, but it's not always a guarantee, but we do our best to get out there and enforce the speed. In the last 12 months, on the east side of town, we've done 883 traffic details. So what does that mean? So that's when you see an officer sitting by the side of the road and he's running radar, he's looking for traffic violations. Sometimes they're out there for 10 minutes, sometimes they're out there for a half hour, 45 minutes. Sometimes they get zero violators and sometimes they get five. On the west side of town, there was 840. So why that's a little significant is because the majority of our traffic in Gurnee is on the west side of town. You know, with you have Six Flags, Gurnee Mills, that brings in 23 million visitors a year. We have so much traffic over there, but we do spend a lot of time on the east side running traffic. We have spent, let's see, 800 traffic stops in the last 12 months on the east side of town, so 800 traffic stops. All right. On the traffic safety portion, when it comes to school buses, we've had a couple different concerns about that with some of the residents. One about passing school buses and if the areas are safe for the kids. So a couple things, this is the process for school bus violations in town, just so everyone is aware how this works. So for us to be able to cite somebody for a school bus violation, the school bus driver has to be able to identify that person driving the vehicle that passes them at the time. So not only will the bus driver have to be able to identify the car, the license plate, but the person in the car. And the law doesn't make it easy for the bus driver because we have to put a phone line up together with five other individuals that look like that person, and they have to pick that person out. That's just how it works in Illinois. That's just how the law works. So when a bus driver sees a car pass it, its stop arm, they send their district, or their transportation district a letter or email or however they do it, saying this is the license plate that passed. They scan a form to us that says, "On this date and time, this car passed this school bus and its arm was out." And because we can't identify the driver, all we can do is send a letter to the driver or the owner of the vehicle, because we don't even know who's driving it, saying that these are the consequences if you pass a school bus. There can be a 90-day suspension on your driver's license. If you're caught doing it, these are the fines. All it is is a notice. We're not actually enforcing that because there's nothing we can enforce unless somebody actually sees that on the bus. So these are the districts that report stop arm violations to us and how many they've reported. So in this year alone, we have District 121, 15, District 50, 37. We have zero by District 56. So that is from the district office to us, how many times that they've reported that. Now, we are in discussions, or we will be in discussions with the school bus, the transportation, to see if they want to install the cameras. You might have seen some of the cameras on some school buses. We don't have any in Gurnee, but what they are is it's a camera that adapts to the outside of the school bus. When the stop arm is out and the car passes it, it not only snaps a picture of the license plate, but it gets a picture of the driver of the car. We can work with that. We can cite them. We can give them a ticket for that, but that's going to be on the transportation company and the school districts. So we're going to be having conversations with them to see if they're at least willing to do that with the buses that are having the most amount of violations. One of the other concerns was over on the east side of town, actually off Delaney, there's a blind curve there that we were putting two stop signs out, or not stop signs, but working with Public Works to put additional signage out there saying, "Hey, there's a bus stop ahead," because that bus stop either needs to move or we need to work with the school district to try to find a more feasible location. Next slide. One of the questions were, what kind of crime are we seeing on the west side of town? What kind of crime are we seeing on the east side of town? So in the last 12 months, these are the biggest things that we see. So on the west side of town, we have the majority of the retail district, which is Gurnee Mills. So we see the majority of the retail thefts over there. That's just by design because that's where the majority of the retail is. Thefts over and under $500, unwanted subjects from property, and then criminal damage to property. On the east side of town, we're seeing burglary from vehicles, motor vehicle theft, disorderly conduct, and criminal damage to property. These are just the top ones. So where we see the burglary from vehicle, that is mostly, we're not seeing people breaking into cars like breaking windows. We're seeing people walking down the streets, pulling on door handles, going into open cars. We're seeing the motor vehicle thefts, if it's not the U-Haul, because they had a couple taken, but we see them at where people leave their keys in their car or leave their car running with it unlocked because it's winter and it's cold outside. We're seeing that. We're not seeing as many broken windows and people stealing cars. You know, sometimes somebody will say, "We had this, that, you know, I was robbed." The person at that time, they weren't robbed, somebody went into their car and took their cellphone out. So that's a burglary from vehicle. A couple things on the neighborhood safety things. You know, we've seen a couple incidents on the east side of town this year in the last 12 months. We had two calls of shots fired. Okay, so both of those have been in the, on social media. The first one was from a resident's house. They lived in, they lived on the east side of town. It had to do with drugs and the shooting happened outside the residence. So that is not crime coming into town that's happening, that is a resident living in town. And then the other one is a more recent one where two individuals, two cars came into town and there was a shooting over in the Pine Grove area, and then those cars took off. Now, that one, the first one was residence. This second one was not a random act. These two people knew each other, but it was a random location. They pulled off to the side in Gurnee and it just happened to be, it just happened to be in Gurnee where this happened, where the two cars got into it.
You know, on Pine Grove, that was on the south side of Gurnee, right?
Yes, yep. So those are the only two instances in the last 12 months where we've seen something like that. And both of those were not preventable. And from our standpoint, it's only something that we can react to afterwards. And we know that the people that came into town and those two cars that shot at each other aren't from our town because of the flock cameras, and we'll go over that briefly in just a second. The largest calls we get for service on both the east side of town and west side of town come from domestic-related issues and like crisis intervention type situations with families. And then on the west side of town, the other thing that the guys respond to a lot, the guys and girls, is burglar alarms. And then we haven't seen them as much, but you know, several months back, the panhandling complaints. Now, panhandlers, we haven't had them on the east side as much recently, but we've had them on the west side of town, just so everyone is aware, and I'm sure everyone is, it's constitutionally protected, right? So they can go in front of a business and they can go on the sidewalk and they can ask for assistance. They can ask for money, they can ask for food. It's when the business owner doesn't want them. If Target or Starbucks, they don't want them on their property, then they have to leave. It's when they step in the roadway that causes the safety of them and the car, that's against the law. So for us to, first of all, when our officers respond to them, just like when they respond to anyone in need, there, it's a compassionate, respectful approach. We offer resources, we offer rides, but if they don't take that and, you know, they step in the roadway and somebody wants to file a complaint, the person that sees the panhandler, they actually have to say, "I seen this panhandler, he stepped into the roadway," then we can cite them. But other than that, we're giving them his resources and telling them to stay out of the roadway or stay off somebody's property. So calling and saying that there's a panhandler, that's not against the law unless they're doing something that's breaking the law. Next slide.
I have a question about that first slide. Do you have stats of like how many burglaries?
We're just trying to look at the weather and the very end. That's okay, yep.
I don't know if that's eight till nine, but...
No, it's not nine, it'll be before that probably, probably eight o'clock.
Okay. One of our other crime prevention, or one of our crime prevention initiatives is our Flock Safety Initiative. So you might have seen some of these, maybe you haven't. This one right here is on the east side of town. It's about Route 132 in Lawrence. And this camera, like the ones by Gurnee Mills and the ones by Great Wolf and the ones up and down Grand Avenue, it captures license plates. And it captures license plates and it looks exactly like this. So this car, this van was stolen. It was driving down Grand Avenue. It was passing the community thrift store, has the date and time, and that's all we get from it. We don't get the owner's information, we don't get anything about the owner, we don't get any race, nothing like that. This is all our cameras show us. So it is good for when we had the incident with the shooting because now we know that the cars that came into town that were involved in that, one was stolen, one was not, we can find out where they're from. So it helps us, it's a great tool to follow up on things, but it's not an end-all, be-all for all situations because we only get so much information from it. You know, they're strategically placed around town, around the village, so that way we get people coming into the village and we can see if there's issues coming in. So what these cameras will say, they'll say, "Hey, this vehicle's stolen." They'll say the owner of the vehicle's wanted. They'll say this vehicle was used in a felony. There's a missing kid or a missing person that's registered to this vehicle. So that's what we get from these flock cameras. The other thing that we get, so shortly we'll be getting them, we're upgrading our cameras in our police cars. So all our police cars have cameras on the inside of them besides the body cams the officers wear. And those cameras, when they activate them, you know, they capture whatever type of traffic stop they're on. But what they will also be doing is they will also be integrated with Flock. So as the officers driving around the village, they're actually capturing Flock plates just like this, and it will tell them if the car in front of them is stolen without them even running the plate. They'll be able to know that the person in front of them is wanted, the person in front of them is missing because they're elderly and they have dementia. So we're, that will be in the next 12 months. Many of you have seen this mobile safety tower that we have. We got this off a grant from the Attorney General's Office, and we got it right before Gurnee Days. So we had it out at Gurnee Days. We have it out on the east side right now. Not only does this give us coverage day and night, 24 hours, and records it for us, and it also allows us to get license plates. It has two camera readers that have the ability to capture license plates on it too. So you'll be seeing this more often now that we have it. It's going to be moved around town to different areas as we need it. All right, one of the things that, you know, we got questions about what type of resources that we add for people that are in need because that seems like it was a hot topic in the last several months. So one of the things that I wanted to put out, you know, we, not only do our officers provide information when we deal with panhandlers and other people that need, that have needs, but we are a part of a crisis and support outreach team, which is a COSS team. So we're one of six other agencies in Lake County that we partner with a mental health clinician and we send them out. We send them out to, if they're a panhandler, we'll send them out to, if we have somebody living behind a building, we'll send them out to see if they can offer resources that we can't offer. So you have the mental health clinician, you have the officer, they act as one, they go out there together, and so that's been good for us. But once again, you can offer the person support, you can offer them resources, but they have to accept it, right? One of the other things that came up, one of the topics was, what if we, do we need more Gurnee police officers? You know, would it matter if we had more Gurnee police officers? And so I'm here to tell the mayor, we need 200 more police officers. No. So we, we actually, we've actually, the village board and the mayor have been really good to us and we've been allowed to raise our staffing. So for the first time in many years, we have the ability to get to the highest we've ever been. It's just getting there. So right when COVID and the civil unrest happened, we lost a lot of police officers. Many of them retired right when they could, they took other jobs, and some went out of state. So what does that do to us? That drops us down. So the green barcode across the bottom shows how many people we're allowed to have. So on 2024, you can see we have a 71. We're allowed to have 71 police officers in Gurnee. We have 69, that's the black number on top. But only 57 of them are actually on the road working because the other, the other officers are all in training or they're on, they've been hurt, so they're on FMLA, or there's some, we have an officer that's deployed. So because we can get to 71, but 57 is where we're at. It takes one year from the date that we interview somebody for a job at the Gurnee Police Department, from the day they actually impact the schedule and they're out on their own in District 1 and 3, it takes one year. So they go through the whole hiring process, they go through the whole police academy, and then they go through six months of field training. And after that, and as long as they're not extended because they need more training in something else, and they make it through everything, one year, they get on the road. So even if the village gave us the ability to hire 200 people today, we're still at 57 officers and we'll be there for the next few months until we keep sending people to the academy, but it takes a while to build our numbers back up. So that's where we're at. And the one thing that happened during COVID and civil unrest, besides everyone leaving, we had to dwindle our numbers down. We had to take away all of our specialty positions. So our visitor-oriented policing team that will do like focused, focused area enforcement, we had to disband them. We had to put everyone back on the patrol because patrol is the main backbone of a police department, right? You call for help, you expect a patrol officer to show up. So we can't have those numbers lower than what they were. We sent everyone to patrol except for a couple detectives. Now we're finally able to build back up. We have our full arraignment of detectives, and now we have our first two officers reassigned back to the visitor-oriented policing team. They're actually the two officers in back right now, the two taller ones, which everyone to me is taller, but those are the two in the back. So they are, they are our uniform detectives. So you will see them like they are right now doing traffic enforcement. You will see them in plain clothes, walking behind the buildings. You will see them in unmarked cars, driving around. You'll see them all over. So if you don't see them on social media, you'll see them around your neighborhood if you haven't already. Neighborhood safety. All right, so the feedback we've been getting in the last few weeks is that everyone that has been staying behind the buildings out on the east side has now moved on. Okay, that doesn't mean that they won't come back. That doesn't mean that, you know, we're not going to see people trespassing on property later on, but from talking to the clerks at the gas station, to the thrift store, to other businesses there, they have seen a significant drop in any of the people that were causing issues before staying behind the buildings. So hopefully that you've also seen our officers out there, I hope, but you know, our officers are out there walking behind buildings checking for that, they're helping assist with code. They're helping assist with code enforcement when they're seeing trash piled up back there. They're helping code enforcement when they're seeing other issues around the village. You know, that's not their main focus, but when they have time, they do pass that information along. Excellent. So just a little bit on crime prevention, self-safety-type things. So, well-lit and maintained properties, you know, it's like anything else. When you see something, you know, people here will say, you know, "I don't feel safe because this building's run down," or "this area's run down." Well, it's the same way for everyone. So, well-lit, well-maintained properties, you know, cutting your bushes back and your shrubs, making sure that people can't walk behind it. You know, we see when if somebody's going to enter a residence, it's because it's dark, because that, the windows are covered by something. So making sure that it's well-maintained. Addressing the little things. Graffiti, you know, we were addressing graffiti behind the buildings. The village has been doing that, they're working with the, the business owners. Making sure that the trash is picked up in your own yard, because we're working with the, the businesses to do the same thing there. Join or start a neighborhood watch program in your area. If you're not part of one, or there's not one in your area, we can, we can certainly start one up for you. And then consider a camera or a smart doorbell. And I say this because, as a person that has both of those myself, I thought that everyone has at least one. And working in a major crime task force, you know, in the past, we have been able to, when we had a homicide in Lake County, follow the offender actually down roads all the way to his apartment complex, another town away, by just pulling ring doorbells in videos. We're able to follow the person all the way back to his house, who did it. When we had the shooting out there, when the shots fired call came out on Grove, there was very little video, if any. The one or two people that had a smart doorbell didn't have the sensitivity up enough to catch the roadway. So it was very surprising that almost nobody in that area had something that we could use to go off of. Which, you know, nowadays, that's not an expensive thing to get something small like that, but not only will it help you keep people away, because when people walk up, we've seen it time and time again, where people walk up to a doorbell, like they're going to either walk into the person's house when they're not home, they're going to walk into the back door when they're not home, and they see the light turn on from that ring doorbell or that Nest cam, and they turn around and walk away. We get it a couple times a month where somebody will call in and say, "Hey, I have the suspicious person that walked up to my door, and as soon as he got to my door, he turned around and went away." So it is a deterrent. Report suspicious activity, the last thing. I mean, this seems like a very common thing, but you know, we even recently got a call from somebody on the east side that said, "Hey, we have an issue here, I, I need some signage saying that people can't park in this area." And we asked why, and they said, "Well, there's drug dealing going on here." Well, when is this, how long's this been going on? Well, well over a year. Why didn't you call us? Because we thought you guys were busy. We're not too, this is our job, we're not too busy for that, okay? And you laugh, but we're not too busy for that. We want to be in your neighborhood, we want to come out and talk to you, we want to come out and fix your problems. Tell us that stuff. You know, we can't fix it with a sign, we have to, we have to work together on this. So, that's all I have for now, and I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
So that was the only real formal presentation tonight. What's going to happen now is that there was a lot of good questions that came in through email that we wanted to address based on each of the individuals and their specific departments. So I'm going to ask Ellen Dean to come up to talk a little bit about, there were some questions that came in about the business district, and Ellen does a great job with our businesses here in town, so.
Thank you, Mayor. So yes, my design will be a little shorter, although not nearly as informative. That was, that was fantastic. So I want to share my observations about our business district, and what I think is good about it, and what I think is good about your neighborhoods. I remember when we convened a working group back in 2016, it was residents and merchants together, and the refrain that I heard over and over again was, we really, this is the hidden gem of Gurnee, the residents really enjoyed the character, and they really were looking for tweaks and improvements, but not wholesale change. And I, and I think that's still true today, but we'll, obviously we'll talk more about that. It's been noted in previous meetings, and I just want to acknowledge it because it's, I'm sure a little maybe a source of frustration to you, that East Grand Gurnee has been noted as a priority planning area in studies of the village going back to 1997. So, the first record that I saw of it was in our 1997 comp plan. We noted it in our 2020 comp plan, and in between those two dates, there were at least two, there was the zoning overlay district that went on in 2001, and then in 2004, the village commissioned a revitalization study, and again in 2016, we asked the Urban Land Institute to come in and take a look. So, study, 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 right? Action, you know, I think you'd all like to see a little more action, frankly, so would we. So we're here to hold each other to higher standards and keep moving forward. So the mix of businesses today has been pretty steady and stable, and it's balanced. So we have 43% services businesses, 28% retail, 19% offices, and the remainder kind of don't fit into those categories, a couple churches, a couple residential buildings, a vocational school that trains nursing students, you know, just fantastic, but, but don't quite fit. So, within each of those, that's a good balance of, of retail, service, and office. Within each sector, it's very interesting, there has been a cluster that has kind of developed over the years, and has been discernible for at least eight or 10 years, since the last time we really, in 2016, the last study. So within the service sector, it's automotive. Lots of places you can get your muffler done, or have your, your vehicle serviced, the car washed. And that's been the case for quite some time. Within retail, there are two clusters. One is home improvement, featuring our, our own Gurnee Garden Center, Sherwin-Williams, you know, there used to be PPG Paints, there's appliance sales. So this is a really interesting home improvement cluster. And interestingly, one of the recommendations of the last study was, you know, lean into these clusters. I know we don't all love the thrift stores, which is kind of a secondary cluster within retail. There are three, three thrift stores and two that sell overstock goods. You know, I, you know, that's, that's just, it is what it is, and so some say that can be, that can be a positive. I, I don't know whether that's true or not, but there's the certain, the millennials love vintage finds, so they, that was just something they noted, and it has been pretty consistent. Within offices, the most prominent is staffing agencies, there are six. And then medical. So, clear clusters. The trade area for East Grand is something that we, that we can deep dive into more today than we could have even a year ago, really. These days, aggregation of cellphone data allows us to look at the profile of the customers and where they're coming from, where they live, how long they're in town, where they came, where they shop before they came to East Grand, where they're going afterward. Of course, we can do that all around town. It's very interesting. In the East Grand corridor, the trade area that it's pulling from skews very, skews east, almost, almost entirely east of Route 41. So as a home base, and they, of course, they know that by where your cellphone sleeps for eight hours a night, home base, 45% is Waukegan, 10% is Gurnee, 7% is Zion, and 5% is North Chicago, and then the rest is, just trickles with, but, but primarily pretty far east. So that's interesting. So, and I think that the, so the same location analytic tool that we use to discern that can also tell us what's missing. So I know one of the questions that we've talked about, and I know you're thinking about is, okay, so what do we not have on East Grand that would really be nice? And so the first rule is, we always listen to the residents, what would you patronize? But we also have to listen to the market. So this tool tells us a few categories of businesses that, that would be good matches based upon the demographics of our customers that are already coming to East Grand on a regular basis. So no surprise, restaurants, more restaurants, I can't argue with that. And especially quick-service restaurants. There is a little bit of capacity for sit-down. One of the, one of the brands that came up, I guess that's specific, one of the brands that came up was O'Charley's, you know, like a, like a moderate, sort of like a TGI Friday's sort of a, a sit-down. But other than that, quick service, it mentioned men's and women's apparel, moderately priced, talked about a fitness center, and even a grocery, an independent grocery store, which I thought was really surprising, because obviously we have Jewel really close, Lewis is just down the street. Last time we looked at this, you know, the experts didn't think that a grocery store was viable there, but I think we should take another look at it. So, what we do with that information, the other thing that to note is that the vacancy rate is really low, which is really good news. You know, you want your vacancy to be low. I know, I'm seeing some faces that suggest that, that that's a surprise. There really are only two large vacancies that skew the vacancy rate a little higher. The Habitat Restore, which just vac, became vacant in June, which is about 30,000 square feet, and the Sussman Flooring Building, which just changed ownership, so I don't think it'll be vacant too much longer, and it's close to 20. But when you strip out those two large boxes, the vacancy rate on East Grand compares almost exactly with what it is on Grand Avenue west of 94, and also compares favorably with all of Lake County. So, you know, good for, good for East Grand. It's, it's a stable, a lot of the businesses have longevity, we're not seeing the vacancy. So, so if we have a good mix of businesses and vacancy rates are low, it begs the question, why do so many properties need renovation? Why do they look the way they do? Why do they need a facelift, in some cases, more than a facelift? It's not the whole answer, but one of the answers is that the rents are also very low. So, back when we studied this in 2016, rents were about $10 a square foot, today they're about $12 a square foot. They're going in the right direction, but when you consider the cost of inflation and the cost of construction, and what it takes to build out a tenant space for a brand-new business, or renovate a property in a comprehensive way, that's expensive, and so those rents at $12 aren't providing the return on investment that the owners of the shopping centers, who for the most part are remote, you know, they're not running their, but there's a few, obviously, that are running their business out of that location. A lot of them just own them as investments, and they live in Chicago or wherever. So, it needs to, it needs to be profitable, and, and at $12, in many cases, you know, the answer is that it's not. So, what's our role in kind of breaking that logjam? So I think that one, we've already started with one of the answers. One of the answers is, is small business capital grants. And the, the sheet that you may have picked up in the back says that that number is 127,300-ish allocated, awarded to East Grand businesses. That has gone up by $20,000 in the last week. We just awarded another grant last week. So we're now at almost 150,000, and that is through the generosity of the Village But we need, I think there's more to be done. That is, that is a great first step, and it's helped a lot. A lot of businesses make some very, you know, some improvements that help keep those properties viable. But the next piece of that really is business attraction. So, we've, we've sent a clear message, at least I hope it's clear, and we'll continue to make it clear, to all of the East Grand property owners and their brokers, when they have a vacancy, which is rare, that we want to be part of that conversation. That we know, we were just, we kind of go in with the assumption that there's probably going to be an economic gap between what the tenant, to get a little bit different type of tenant, maybe it's that great new restaurant that needs to build a kitchen, kitchen build-outs are very expensive, you know, it's a risk, they haven't been there before, landlord doesn't want to put money in. How do we, how do we bridge that gap? So we, we've made it clear, bring us to the table, maybe we can help. We, we tend to have a preference for rebates, sales tax rebates, but this is an area where we, we lead with that. We say, "Please ask us," because we really want to bring some fantastic, you know, new businesses into town when the opportunity arises. So, and that is it. So one of the questions was funds, funding for that. So again, the Village Board has been very generous with economic development, and there is a $300,000 reserve for economic development. And the reason it's titled "reserve" is because that's an awareness that we don't know what's going, what the opportunities will be until they, you know, until either we make them or they come our way, but we know something will come up during the year that would not happen but for the assistance of the village. And we want to be ready, and that's why we have the funds, so that we're ready to make that happen. So, you know, thinking back again to, to 2016, you know, we, we were still in the midst of construction, which was very injurious, our businesses were hurting, we're so pleased that so many valued businesses made it through. You know, that's a tremendous testament to the neighborhood, those, all of their customers who support them, and to the businesses themselves who just had the grit to get through year after year of construction. Back then, all we could do, you know, we couldn't change the construction schedule because it was the state of Illinois. All we could do is try to bring people, and, and, and that was difficult enough because of, because of the construction. So that's what, just, you know, as history, that's what prompted the farmer's market coming to East Grand. That's what prompted all those radio ads and marketing campaigns, giving away gift cards, if you came over to shop on East Grand, and you'd have a chance to get a gift card. It's what, you know, so it's, so those are the type, even the landscaping, which believe it or not, was really part of that effort, to try to make East Grand a more pleasant place to be, and make it possible for, or more probable that people would come shop. So, you know, today, the goals might be, the goal's still the same, maybe the path to getting the challenges might be just a little bit different, but I am very appreciative that we're all here navigating that path together. So thank you.
So now we're going to have Dave Ziegler, and then Heather will follow up after that. So we're shooting for around 8 o'clock, and then we're going to open it up to the public to ask questions that they haven't answered. So, Dave?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Dave Ziegler, I'm the Director of Community Development for the Village Gurnee, so I want to kind of give you an overview of our department, what we do, what we can do, and what we have been doing. Gurnee Community Development, we have about 15 staff. Myself is the full-time director, we have two clerical staff in the form of a building permit coronator, and our department secretary, four engineers, one of which is a vacant position right now. Our engineering staff oversees a lot of the capital development projects that you see around town, whenever there's orange signs and the pavement's torn up, that's, that's usually our engineering department working. We have two full-time staff in our planning and zoning department, one of which is a vacant position right now. We have five full-time in our building safety department, those are our building inspectors and plan reviewers. Typically, they only do new construction, remodels, things like that. We process about 2,500 building permits a year, and at any given time, we have 500 to 600 open building permits, so there's 500 to 600 of them currently being worked on. And then finally, code enforcement. Code enforcement is the enforcement side of the department, and that's what steps in when other things aren't going, when operations break down and things aren't going the way they are supposed to. We have one part-time code enforcement officer. He works 30 hours a week in the summertime and 16 hours a week in the wintertime. So that's been a consistent staffing level for, over the last 10 years. So what code enforcement does, the things that they are looking at, that they are working on, municipal code violations, those come in the form of noted nuisances that are defined in our municipal code, property maintenance, woodland preservation, Americans with Disabilities Act violations, and zoning code violations. They also step in when our building code operations don't, either people are not applying for building permits that we find in the community, or that they're not finishing the process, they're, they're becoming non-responsive. So then code enforcement will step in. Likewise, watershed development ordinance, that's our stormwater management ordinance that we have in town. So anything with, along with drainage, with wetlands, with detention facilities, when normal operations break down, that's when code enforcement steps in and helps with that process. And then finally, municipal operations, business licenses, water bills, tax collections, things like that, when normal operations break down, we use our code enforcement arm to help get the attention of the individuals so that they become compliant. So our code enforcement process, kind of our philosophy, our goal is compliance. Our goal is not penalizing, our goal is compliance. And we escalate the intensity as we go along. So the first thing that happens, we get a complaint, whether it's an internal or an external complaint, comes into our code enforcement officer. We have to verify that, we want to make sure that it is a valid complaint. So before any letters go out, before anything else, our code enforcement officer puts eyes on the issue to make sure it is a valid complaint. Upon validation of the complaint, then we issue a notice of violation. There's no penalty associated with it, it's just a notice. It's a, "Hey, homeowner, hey, business owner, this is what the rules are, you're not complying with the rules, we ask for your voluntary compliance." That resolves about 70% of the cases in town. If that doesn't work, we escalate. The next thing is we issue a citation. The citation does have a monetary value associated with it, and it's processed very similar And it's processed very similar to a parking ticket through the, the police department. So it's not a criminal offense, it is a civil offense. And it, you know, so there's, there's no jail time associated with it or anything like that. We hope to get your attention. It's designed to be a nuisance. It's designed to get your attention. If the first citation doesn't work, then we'll double it and send it again. Hopefully, the second time, we'll get your attention and get you to, once again, get into compliance. If the fines and the citations don't work, the next step is we do a notice to appear. The village hires a judge, an administrative adjudicator, to come to the village once a month and hear all of our code enforcement cases. Very similar to what the police does with the red light cameras, the building and zoning department does with our code enforcement case. So we try to get the people in. We want to hear from them. We want to open that lines of communication. Sometimes it's a misunderstanding. Sometimes they're having financial difficulties. We understand, we'll work with you. We just want that communication going so that we can get to our ultimate goal of compliance. Finally, if that doesn't resolve it, our last course of action, so, and then finally, the notice to appear, you know, solves about 10% of the cases. If that doesn't work, the next opportunity we have is to file a case in circuit court. That's a very rare occasion. Those are expensive, time-consuming, and, you know, the, the outcome is always uncertain. So that's way less than 1% of the cases that we have in town that actually go to that, that final step. So ways to report if you have any concerns, any code violations, anything that doesn't look quite right. Our preferred way, we have a web portal called One Stop, O-N-E-S-T-O-P. So onestop.gurnee aisle.us. Links can be found on the village's website. Go onto it, type in the address, and report a concern, I think is, is the tab that you click on. Report the concern, give us a general category of what's going on, a written description of it. It's anonymous, you don't have to put in your contact information. And from that, we can, we'll go out and, and try to verify the complaint, see what's going on, talk to the homeowner, open that line of communication. You can also call community development. Our phone number's on the website. It goes to our part-time enforcement officer and he'll do his best to get it accomplished in a timely manner. You can also stop into the community development counter. We do have paper forms back there that you can fill out. Once again, everything can be anonymous if you want to. If you want to leave us your contact information for a follow-up, we can do that. But once you do, it becomes part of the Freedom of Information Act records and we may not be able to hide who made the complaint. So just, just beware of that. So in answering some of the questions, hope that has answered the majority of them. All Gurnee properties are subject to code enforcement. We have approximately 11,000 residential properties in town and 1,200 businesses. So if you divide that out by one part-time, 30-hour-a-week code enforcement officer, that kind of gives you an idea as to where we're at. However, it's been pretty effective over the years. We always try to find that balancing act of what's appropriate but not overreaching. We don't want to be peeking into everybody's backyard every day to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, but we want to make sure that neighbors are behaving rationally and, you know, socially acceptable ways and that we are, you know, managing properties and expectations as best as possible. All of our businesses receive at least one annual inspection from our fire bureau. Residential properties only receive inspections from our building department when they have active building permits. And then residential properties, if there's visible things from the exterior, those are subject to our code enforcement actions as well. Tall grass, dead trees, fence falling down, things along those lines. And then other than grass cutting and a dangerous tree removal, we really cannot go onto private property to make repairs without a court order. So that's that less than 1% code enforcement action at the very end. We have done that in the past. It's a arduous process, but it, it can happen. And then the question about whether we're reactive or proactive. Primarily, we are reactive. We try to address all the concerns that come in. We do a pretty good job of staying on top of those. We have done a few proactive things. And they're typically things that affect villages' operations. We did one a few years ago. We had a light-duty employee and we had him go around town, check all 11,000 residential properties and do the street numbers. Something as simple as putting street numbers over your door, making sure that it's visible from the street so that our fire department or in case a, a neighboring fire department is handling our coverage, that's so that they can readily find your home. Something like that was a monumental effort by our staff and took a long time to go through something like that. So we do, do some proactive ones, but it is somewhat limited. So with that, I will hand it off to Heather Galan. Actually, Mayor.
You already got introduced.
I did. All right. Hi, everybody. My name's Heather Galan. I'm the Director of Public Works for the Village Gurnee. To kind of go through what does the Department of Public Works look like, we have about 30 employees that report to me thereabouts. We have two individuals that take calls from everybody all day long, one's part-time, one's full-time. We have a fleet division that takes care of our police vehicles, our public works vehicles, and community development vehicles. Those are three mechanics with a supervisor. In our utility division, we take care of the water and the sanitary sewer. So that is 10 maintenance workers, one part-time utility locator, and a manager. And then for our streets department, we have 13 maintenance workers and a supervisor. Now, I think a lot of the comments that came in relate to street division topics. So I'll break down that, how they operate. So we have a construction crew, a lights and signs crew, as well as a forestry crew. So construction is about six folks. It can flex based on what we need. Lights and signs is two, and in forestry, we have five. Summertime, we get some summer kids, if you will, 18-year-old over, that come in. We got six this past year, so that helped us churn out a lot more tree trimming than in the off-season. So what were the questions that came up? Some of it related to jurisdiction. So who owns what? What are some of those complications? I mean, throughout town, not just on the east side, we have IDOT, right? Grand Avenue. It's IDOT Road. It's a big road and it's very visible to a lot of people. And we don't have jurisdiction over it. We do our best. I've sent my guys out on several different occasions at the request of the village administrator or the mayor to go out and pick up trash, to go out and mow, to go out and do whatever's been asked after having asked the state and got no response. We also have the city of Waukegan and Waukegan Township, very much on the east end of town. Starts, their ownership kind of comes in a little bit. So I've got calls about potholes and things like that on those sections that we don't own. And so I've tried to reach out to the Waukegan Township Commissioner and/or Village Engineer Director of Public Works over in Waukegan to try and get them to address some of those potholes when they're very far east. Again, I don't have jurisdiction, but I try to facilitate that. Ellen touched on the railroad. So the railroad's obviously big in town. They rule all things, no questions asked. So when graffiti shows up on their bridge, believe it or not, we've addressed that. Even though we don't own the bridge, we've reached out to a contractor who's certified to be near a railroad crossing because you have to have certain certifications. So we found someone who is, we've hired them, they've taken care of it as many times as, as is necessary. Even though it's supposed to be something the railroad does, you could get on their list, but it's not a priority and they'll tell you that when you call. And finally, I think one of the jurisdictions that kind of overlaps with us is commed. So we get questions about lights being out, streetlights being out or it being dark in an area. So the village's streetlights are, I guess, well-represented as being a black tapered pole with either a fixture on the top of it or a masked arm. On the east side of town, primarily, they're commed lights, which you could notice based on a wood pole with a masked arm. So there were also some questions related to traffic. So Grand Avenue is very large and moves a lot of vehicles. And believe it or not, when I looked on the website for the state, as of 2023, average daily traffic between 41 and Green Bay Road was 29,600 cars per day. So that's average daily traffic there. Whereas if you look west of 41, between 41 and 94, the numbers are actually less, 21,500 to about 25,000. Now, when you get west of 94, all bets are off. It goes way higher. But that stretch between 94 and 21 is actually less than the stretch between 41 and Green Bay Road. So what does that mean, right? When it comes to traffic calming? That was the next topic. So landscape medians were suggested, similar to the ones that we have on Washington Street. So Washington Street, I went measuring, what's the tightest right-of-way we have on Washington Street? And the tightest that I could measure, based on aerials, was about 180 feet wide. So what does that mean? On Grand Avenue, how wide are we talking? So Grand Avenue is 80 feet right-of-way, so 100 feet less. So it's very difficult, if not impossible, to install a landscape island in the way that it is installed on Washington Street. In fact, we have four lanes of driving, one turn lane, that's about 60 feet of paved surface, then you got 10 feet to the north, 10 feet to the south, and that's split between a sidewalk and a parkway. Now, we have tried to do our best with respect to spending money on landscaping in that parkway area that's shared with the businesses. So Ellen referred to that earlier in trying to beautify that area. Another request was always stops. So we get this one a lot in public works. Can you put in an always stop to try and prevent people from speeding in a specific area? And oftentimes, people are not pleased with my response. So we have to follow the manual of, on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the MUTCD manual. And in there, there are certain warrants that have to be met in order to facilitate the installation of stop signs, whether it be single-direction, multidirectional. So some of those warrants are based on crash data, site distance or lack thereof, traffic volumes, and the number of turning movements that are in conflict with one another. And if those warrants are not met, then the stop sign is invalid, meaning if you just threw it up for the sake of putting it there and someone got a ticket, they could get a good attorney who knows this law and get them off. And they get no ticket, and then they have no regard for the stop sign, and then they continue to blow it where everyone else thinks this person's going to stop and they don't. So that is a liability that the village isn't willing to accept at certain times. Another request was for speed bumps, speed humps, speed tables, or raised crosswalks, whether removable or permanent. So I looked into this a bit more. Some people think that I'm anti-speed bumps. And because I'm anti-speed bump, the village is anti-speed bump. But I am just one staff member, taking the opinion of my plow drivers and my staff and looking at the data and looking at the reports and giving my recommendation to the board. And the board ultimately has the decision on what we do. So with respect to that, some reasons that deter the installation include the following. Increased emergency service response time. So if you look at the, I think it's FHA website, three and a half seconds per bump is the delay for a fire engine. 10 seconds for an ambulance with a patient onboard. It can also increase the wear and tear on the vehicles depending on if they slow down properly before they approach. If the area is covered in snow, how do you know that it's there? Does the sign tell you to the side or, or how else are we going to note that? Speaking of snow plowing, routine wear to the plows or to the speed bumps if they don't know they're there and they hit them and chip them, or if they're removable and they break them off. Let's see. Decreased efficiency in plowing, so it'll increase the time because everyone, you know, we drive slow, but you have to be slower. You have to lift the plow. It takes time to lift it, to get over it, to put it back down and to keep going on. Not impossible, but just more time. Increased noise. So this is like one of those unintended consequences. People braking suddenly when they realize, oh, here's a speed bump. And then they get over it and they accelerate because they want to, you know, get to where they're going in a hurry. So there's that. People who have trailers and stuff starts to rattle or pieces of their vehicle are just rusty, falling off when they start to rattle, when they stop and then accelerate. With respect to removable speed bumps, this requires like staff's time, staff time to put them out, take them back if we wanted to take them out during the winter. The research that I found didn't indicate that taking them out in the wintertime was helpful because if the intent is to stop speeding, people still speed in the winter. And then there was a request or a question regarding raised sidewalks across 132. So obviously, 132 is a state road, so IDOT would have to be onboard with that. And based on the 29,000 average daily traffic going over there, it's highly, highly unlikely that they would be onboard with having a raised crosswalk for traffic. So ultimately, we believe it's not feasible in this location. There was also some concern regarding quality or quantity of signage to give that welcome-to-Gurnee feel. So in the past, I think it was two years, we've updated the welcome-to-Gurnee signs everywhere, not just on the east side. But on the east side, there's one by Trio along 132, there's one at Washington and Greenleaf, and a new one at Delaney and Sunset. And those have the new logo and they're kind of refreshed, so they look a little nicer. We've also installed more speed limit signs that the police department referred to, including the digital ones, street name signs in case people were getting lost. And we've also installed, I think there was some speed limit or curve ahead type signs, things of that nature that we've installed after police has noticed that they haven't been there anymore. All that, I say all this to try and help answer some questions, right? Instead of taking up all the time. But I'm happy to answer any additional questions. Public Works, we're customer-driven. We got boots on the ground. You call, we do. This is our thing. So call or go on our GovQA website that David referred to because we have City Works and they're on iPads. And so if you see a bunch of guys on iPads, they're not playing games, they're doing work. And if you fill out that GovQA portal and it says tree trimming forestry, the forestry guys get it on their iPad. So if they're standing right next to you, your house, trimming a tree, if they have the time and the resources and it pops up in their queue, they can do the one right next door or something to that effect. So we try to be efficient with our work with that. And that's all I've got. Thanks.
Okay. So a little bit after eight. So I'm just going to start with, yeah, we made it intentionally hot so you don't want to stay long, right? So not my idea, no. We are redoing the HVAC and, if you haven't said that, in, in the village hall, which has been going on since August. As you can imagine, we've had some hotter days. So hopefully, it'll be done in the next few weeks. So what I'd like to do is just go around and if you have a question, just raise your hand and then I'll do my best to be able to point out staff or somebody that can answer that question. So does somebody have a question that they'd like to ask? Oh, sure. You stayed.
I have a question about the stats that you had earlier. Can you provide how many vehicles have been burglarized in your stats when you said like on the east side compared to the west side?
Yeah, we can provide that. So there's a little bit of difficulty right now with providing statistics with our police department. And that's because we're consolidating dispatch time and we're also all consolidating our CAN systems. So the system that we use all the way until April, it's very easy to go back and pull that data from April until today's date. It's a learning curve for us, being able to run reports. So it's just, it's time-consuming from that point. But we can pull the data to find out how much. I can get you that information if you're willing.
Here, I'm going to take care of it. So if you could put your email address and your name, whether it's a little bit above your question. Who else has a question?
So a lot of other villages have speed humps or speed bumps, you know, to deter speeding and that, and they don't seem to have a problem with plowing and, you know, all the stuff that you mentioned in your, in your report there. So I'm just curious, how come they get away with it and I can't get that here? Like the town of Plainfield, you go down 135th Street over there and there's one every two blocks. There's a hump, you know, it just has to go 20 miles an hour and you have to, you know. So I don't, I don't understand why we can't do that. Because I live on Key's Avenue right next to the bike path and cars go down Key's Avenue because it's a longer street, because there should be a street on the bike path. So it's a really longer street, so they can build up lives in there, you know? I think that would be a good deterrent, you know? A lot of kids use bike paths and that, you know?
So when it comes to the speed bumps, so there's also like a distance requirement, right? So from an intersection, you want to be no further than 200 feet before the first one. You want them spaced out anywhere between 200 and 500 feet. You could go up three inches, not four. Four is a little too hard for vehicles and emergency vehicles. But there, there are trade-offs, right? So if the trade-off of emergency services being delayed is okay with the village board, then, you know, if I'm directed to put in a speed bump, I will.
Would it help to get a petition on the street? If everybody signed off on the street, something like that would help?
It never hurts to hear from, from residents. I could just say that much. And I could say that it's been an ongoing discussion internally and it's just exactly what she brings up, what Heather brings up, and what you bring up. I want to stop the speeders because they're going to end up hurting kids or somebody someday. And on the other hand, I don't want that ambulance to be 30 seconds shorter to my house because I might die because of it. So what do we do? And since we don't have any in town yet, it's not like west side has some, east side doesn't, it's just that there isn't a speed bump in town. So it's, it's a good discussion to have and I can just tell you that we'll continue to have it internally. And if your neighbors get together and sign up petition, doesn't hurt to have that.
City's trial has got them all over the place. I mean, they're everywhere, so.
Right, right. Yes, ma'am? You want to step out?
Sure. So a couple, one was the speed bumps. We have a, the car wash is coming in and it's going to be hard turning left from the car wash exit onto Grand Avenue. So they're going to go through the neighborhood and when they go through the neighborhood, they're going to go to the stoplight, which is right where the park is. That park is right on the sidewalk. And so I don't know how you guys are going to measure, is it going to take having an accident, you know, a kid or a person getting hit by a car before they would put in a speed bump? So that is the concern. Are you guys going to monitor the traffic from that car wash in our neighborhood, you know, just to see? just to see? So that was one thing. And the other thing is, when you go between 41 and 21, or, yeah, 41 to 21, the sidewalk on the south side of the street is horrible. So kids walk, and people bike ride, ride their bikes or whatever, that is, I mean, we should be setting, the city, the village should be setting an example of how we want our residents and businesses to keep their yards and properties. We should be setting the example to have nice sidewalks for these kids. I mean, it's so overgrown that, I mean, I ride my bike and I walk on it all the time, and it's, I hate to say it, but it's terrible. So I think we should set the example. My name is Karen Finkel.
I think, just from what I've heard, Karen, would be, it sounds like this is a perfect example of the portal, to get those guys that can trim. Karen, your objection was about the trees over the sidewalks, not the sidewalk themselves?
Yeah, it's not the sidewalk, it's just the overgrown.
Okay. If you go to that portal and put in the address where you're talking, that would provide some direction to Public Works to be able to come out to make that better. So, thank you for that. Okay. All right. Does somebody else have a question? Yes. Hi.
I have another question. How do we go about trying to get one of those fixed digital stop speed signs in our areas? We live on the south side of Grand Avenue, and where she's talking, the car wash was on, is horrendous to cut through through Washington, be wiggled through to get to help plain light, because you're constantly having speeders. How do we get one of those folk right there by that park?
Sure. So we allocate several a year to go to different areas in the village, depending on where the need is. So we can put our trailer over there and do a traffic study, or an engineering has a thing where we can do a traffic study with speeds, and then we can just make sure that that's the right place for it to go compared to other places. We just wanna make sure we prioritize it right, folks. We'll be more than happy to take a look at that.
Well, the traffic study's been done.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it was there.
I recall complaining about where they had placed it, and one of the community service ladies came out and moved it, because it wasn't at the right spot. But she only did it for a day and then she took it away, and she said that it could only be there for a few. It needs to be there longer.
Sure.
We can not be glad, but point out where it needs to go, but it is a really bad location with the kids walking through that park because of, and schools, because the bus stop is right there, the children might get off on the bus.
No, that's great. If you could put your information on there, and then what we'll do is we'll use one of the other that Dave has, where he'll give us a 30-day timeframe. One day's not enough, so we need at least a month's worth of data. So we'll put that, that's the, you know, the little hole that goes across the roadway? No?
It's on. It's on the side of the road.
Yeah, we have a little radar unit that we can mount to a tree, or a street light, or a wood pole, or something like that, that will measure speeds, directions, and quantity of cars, or come on these ways.
All right, I have to say it, right? Victor Sammons, right? I played football, Victor, so.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Tom. First, thanks all for the presentations. I think we all got a lot out of it. It was very, very helpful, so thank you very much. Two, thank you. Two things that I wanna just go back to, the speed humps. It seems like it's kind of an opinion thing, and I know that there are communities out there that do have speed humps and use them for benefits. So it would be great, maybe to commission a little study that says, hey, here are the benefits, and here are not the benefits. I know somebody mentioned Chicago, I was on the south side recently. There's humps every block, big speed humps. And this is in Chicago, where it's hard to get anything done. So I just might suggest that we could get some data on the pluses and minuses, with some facts of who have it and who do not. That's one. And then I would really love to go back to the code enforcement question. And it sounds like, you even said the word, it's reactive. And you're very much asking us to be the guards of code enforcement. And you own the budget, and a half a person, the community is here saying, boy, that doesn't seem like enough. So maybe that's something that you can also take on and say, hey, what does the community need with respect to 12,200 establishments for code enforcement? So it just doesn't seem to balance out. And again, maybe look at other communities, and what do they commit to code enforcement? And look at best practices. So I think that's all that I'm suggesting, when we talk, look at best practices from other communities. Thanks, Tom.
We gotta go to somebody else, or I'll come back to you, though. I'll get back to you. I just wanna give everybody at least a chance.
So, in relation to the speed bumps, I think the community might feel more comfortable if there was some sort of planning for integrating sidewalks. I know that it wasn't planned, because it's the older side of town, but honestly, to get from point A to point B, I walk the neighborhood every day. I have a pet, and I navigate to the areas with the sidewalks so that I can feel more comfortable. But let me tell ya, dusk comes early now, and when you're walking, and we don't have a lot of streetlights, the sidewalk thing, how are we gonna, how do we come up with a happy medium to integrate it into the old side of town? Maybe the speed bumps wouldn't be such a high priority if we had someplace to walk, and we don't.
I'm forgetting this station name, because we're repeating this line, but I'm sorry about that. I was just, when I remember it, yeah.
My name's Victoria Ball.
My name's Doug Sheer, and I've been listening to the speed bump controversy of the evening. And part of me says, gee, once we get a speed bump, then everybody will wanna speed bump everywhere, and then the town will be just like Chicago, and then where will we be? But at the same time, knowing nothing about speed bumps, literally nothing, I like the idea of ones that you can remove, for this reason and this reason only. So let's say there's someone who decides they wanna go fast down a particular street. So you put a couple of temporary speed bumps there, and they decide, heck with it, I'm gonna try somewhere else. And then by doing that, you end up deterring people for a particular problem. You deter that speeder, and then after a good three months, when the person stopped going on that street because they don't even live in Gurnee, you remove those speed bumps and put them somewhere else. And then all of a sudden, next thing you know, nobody wants to...
I have a question in here, Doug, something.
All right, all right, sorry. All right. So, like people have been talking about, is it possible to create, in the thinking of speed bumps and deterring traffic, and working together, all the divisions?
Thanks, Doug, I appreciate it. I'll hang on to it this time.
I won't be long, I promise. Hi, my name is Jacenia Jimenez-Captain, and I have a couple of questions. First, before I have my questions, I wanna say to Gurnee Police Department, your COAST program is amazing. The data on that is amazing, and you definitely deserve an applause for that alone, so. So my big question, I was, we were at the 2016 community talk, and we had talked about the train horn at 4:00 AM for it to stop, and it has not stopped. It's awful. Can we get it to stop? Second, because I know other communities do have that. And the second thing is, on Northwestern, the traffic there is horrible, but the speeders are even worse. And they, when, where we go into our drive, there's always someone right behind us, ready to hit us because they're going so fast, including the semis. I know that they're avoiding Delaney, but speed bumps would help there, so.
Okay, thank you. So, it's trains we don't control, but we can ask. So I mean, the 4:00 AM, right, we can ask. So that's one of those things that someone said before, trains are in charge, and they really are, but at the end of the day, we can ask. Somebody else have a question? I cut you. It's all right. I had to tell you my name last time. My name's Andy Fallupiac. And I don't know how much of the lighting belongs to ComEd, and how much belongs to Gurnee in that area, but it could use a boost, you know? We could use some more lamp hours over there, or lamp years. Heather, do you have, as far as you're seeing for us as a village, there's...
We only have an handful of streetlights out there. If we wanted to have, we could make a request with ComEd to put additional lights in. There are request forms that allow people to solicit the installation of more streetlights. We have to make sure everybody in the area is on board, because, you know, one person is not on board, the streetlight goes in front of their house, and then they have to take it out. So we just ask people out.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi. Please say your name.
Marilyn. As far as the thrift store cluster on Grand Avenue, I don't know how, but it would be really nice if maybe there was just one thrift store, because it's like a bunch of stuff that I don't need, really. I'm trying to get rid of it out of my house. So it's almost like, you know, you don't want, you don't need thrift stores to compete with thrift stores, right? So there's no competition. So I think there's too many.
And probably, we'd like to see a couple restaurants, no doubt, but from our perspective, there's that private-public balance where we can't tell people what to put there other than the broad zoning requirements. So unfortunately, if there were gonna be three thrift stores, and it was zoned correctly, we couldn't stop that from happening. So, I mean, we like the variety, but it's difficult. It's a difficult, so. But thanks for that. Saw questions this way, okay.
Hi, my name's Kevin Moss.
I'll hang on to it.
You ran on a platform, I'm cleaning up the village weeds and debris from the village.
Right.
And every time I drive around town, especially the gateways, like off of 94, and I come off the ramp or on the ramp, there's nothing but weeds. And I know, I know Route 132 is a state road. I know Dilly's is a state road. But can you guys afford a couple jugs of weed killer, and just make it a pleasant experience to drive into this town? You ran on that platform.
Is there a question there somewhere, right?
Yeah, it was. The jugs, can you afford the jugs?
We can afford the jugs, yes.
Can you put it out there and kill the weeds?
We certainly can.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I have to see if there's other people that haven't talked, but I'll get back to you, Karen. So, it's a problem if I know your name.
Hello, I'm Andy Thiem. I was wondering if, I noticed there's structural damage over at the Fair Bridge Inn, that the whole area is like taped off. Is that a code violation? And is that something that the engineers have looked at from the village, and is there a plan to fix that?
David, you could.
Yes. So there was an accident out there this late spring, early summer. A car lost control and ran into the, one of the support columns for the portico share, the canopy for the Fair Bridge. I was called out that night by the Police and Fire Department, took a look at it. It's stable, but not long-term stable. The owner is aware of it. He's indicated that he's, his preference is to remove the entire canopy and put in a smaller structure. He committed that he would have that permit plans into us in the next 30 days. That's been about 20 days ago. So we're giving him a very short leash. My concern is, once we hit the snow loads on it, that's gonna be an extra weight on it that we don't wanna see. So we are pushing. It's a concern. It's not imminently going to fail, but with some additional loads on it this winter, I do have some concerns.
What action will the village take, then, if Fair Bridge doesn't go between Grand Avenue and Bell Plain? The light there really doesn't provide a lot of notice to anyone that somebody's crossing, especially when pedestrians are trying to cross at the same time as cars are. What about improvements to that light? I know that belongs to the state, but to add maybe just a pedestrian-only crossing time, maybe with audio or audible alerts, so that pedestrians feel safer crossing Grand Avenue.
So we can interact with the state on that, right, Heather, to ask for those specific improvements? And George, if you could fill that out, so we make sure we follow up with you. Questions? So, hi.
I'm Pat. I live on Pacific. I have a question. Who's responsible for the road to the property line? Because there's the road, there's a ditch, and there's always tree limbs falling down, and it's very high, and nobody cuts it. And the actual prop, so you have the road, the gutter, way overgrown, you have a fence, and you have an empty lot that is completely overgrown. And I don't know if you can do anything about the lot, but the infringement on the road and the trees falling, who's responsible for that? The homeowner or the city?
Heather.
So, here's a parkway tree. Here's a parkway tree.
Well, the other tree, it's just, it's just so overgrown and guttered, it goes up the road, and when a tree branch comes down, you know, falls onto the road. They're not taken care of proper.
Public property falling out of public property.
Yeah, because besides the high weeds, and, I mean, they're right to the edge of the road. And with all the coyote problems and whatever, the question even goes beyond that, there's a lot of property on Bell Plain. There's this one by us where there are a lot of animals and what have you, and there never seems to be anything done to get these people to clean out their property. And, but I think this concern is, is this overgrown, it's always growing onto the road, or the tree branches are, it's like nobody takes care of it, it's like just junk.
Sure. No, that happens, that happens all over the place, where some people don't maintain their, which is vegetation, tree, whatever.
But who's responsible for that?
So if, if the sidewalk is...
There's no sidewalk.
Okay. If it's encroaching into public roadway and has become a hazard, right? Someone can get there.
So, from the property line, so is Gurnee responsible for the property line? Well, he has suspects. So is Gurnee responsible for the gutter all the way to the road?
So, the ditches? Yep.
The ditches, yep. Nobody ever cuts it, let me tell you.
Well, so, it is a visit, but the village doesn't go around the library parkway, and that is not our responsibility. The homeowner goes to the parkway.
But the homeowner doesn't do anything.
And that we can cite for enforcement arms of the village. But if there is actual, like, branches on the road, or things of that nature, then we can come in with our forestry crew, we can trim the branches, we just need to know that it's there.
What about the, where the weeds, grass? What road is that? It's on, it's on Pacific between Big Place and the Dead End. So Big Place is where Gurnee starts, and that's the Dead End Street, and on the north side.
Can you write that down? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Somebody else have any other questions?
My name is Lauren Bugner, and I mean this with the utmost respect to everyone in the room. I was under the intention that, the impression that this meeting was being held to offer suggestions and information about how to improve the safety and the overall livelihood of the East Grand Corridor. And I am not understanding how, like, I guess all things remaining equal, if speed bumps were installed, or additional lights, is that going to fix the problem that got us here in the first place? That's my question.
Well, probably since this was my idea, I'll take that, so.
I mean, y'all know what causes these.
Right. Correct. And to me, in the past, as Ellen Dean recited so well, is that, for me personally, I've never had a response from neighbors like this, ever. So to me, it was more like taking advantage of low-hanging fruit, that the neighbors are interested, and we want to partner in this. So that was the reason for the presentations, like, hey, this is what we do, and then we wanna hear what you guys see that needs to be done. You give us your ideas, and the people that are qualified to put that together, we're gonna put together a plan, but then there's gonna be specific recommendations from your neighbors. So to me, I'm just hearing people with their specific issues that they've got, and that's what I expected in a town hall, right? So it's moving in a direction where hopefully we have improvement on the east side, in all areas, you know, socially, you know, just everything. Is that, that, so that's what I hear, you know? I'm not sure what you're expecting, but...
I guess I was just, I thought that it was, maybe, maybe I was just like, that there was a bigger safety concern or a bigger issue than the things that are being... safety concern or a bigger issue than the things that are being addressed. And that's undermining whatnot, because speeding is an issue, child safety is an issue, parks, you know, but I just thought, for when I agree with your speedings.
Okay, I'd be happy to talk to you more about that if you'd like, so.
My name is Nancy, I live on Magnolia in Gurnee and I want to thank the police or the village, whoever's responsible for putting those speed signs, monitors. They need to probably put them on Bell Plain as well because when school's in session, I don't know if it's teachers racing to get to work or if it's parents racing to get their kids to school or racing to get home after school, but it's, there's a lot of speeders on, it's helped on Magnolia, there's still a number of them, you probably monitor them, but there's still a number of speeders that come down, they're going 50, 60 miles an hour. So, same thing on Bell Plain.
Thanks, Nancy. All right, so I have a few minutes and then I'm going to turn it over to Art and Karen. So, let's see, for someone that hasn't asked a question yet.
Hi, I'm Andrea, I live on Bell Plain Avenue and actually I have three things I'd like to ask about. One, until the decision can be made as to whether speed bumps can go on Bell Plain, my question is, can we get some additional officer? Because these people fly down that street like it's a racetrack, someone is going to get hurt, it's going to be a child, it's going to be a pet that's, that's gotten out, it's got to stop. It's a residential area and it was fine up until the point when the, I don't know if it was the village or who came in and redid that street and you striped it double yellow. People think this is like a, a major, well, it is a major fair where people use it to cut through, to avoid lights up on Green Bay. It needs to stop. My kids are grown, but I have grandchildren.
So we need to have a question.
Yeah, well, my question is, can officers, can we have some police that maybe sit on a corner somewhere and monitor, I mean, I'm telling you, you'll make lots of money in the, in the citations you're going to write, okay? That's one. Then I have another question regards to this gentleman in regards to code. I, I'm happy to hear that there are steps that you, you know, protocol that you have in place, that you move forward as things need to escalate, but you cannot tell me that the problem with Fair, Fair Bridge has just occurred, that has been deteriorating for years. So here's my question, what exactly, what is the status on Fair Bridge as far as their code violations? Where are you in that step, that process that you have in place?
What code violation?
I'm sorry?
What code violation?
There's got to be, well, look at, look at the building! I mean, you'd have to be out of your gourd to think that there's not violations there. We all know there are, but I mean, look at the, the accident that occurred. Listen, I have a home, I live on Bell Plain, I have my house insured, if I have something that happens to my home, I'm going to go to my insurance. Don't tell me that owner does not have insurance on his building. Where's the insurance money? That should have been fixed long time ago. So I fault the village for not being proactive to push harder on this individual. So that's my question, where exactly-
It's not like a question, but I got a-
It is a question. Where exactly is, where are, where is the village in regards to the steps in regards to them getting things taken care of with that building, as far as that, that underpass or whatever you want to call it, the little porch or whatever?
So, we, I answered that question, we answered that question, it's like they've been, until, we're 10 days away from providing an actual notice of violation for that and then it goes through the next step. So they've promised us that they would have it taken care of in 30 days and we're at day 20. So, we're following up with, with that, so.
So if he does not do it?
Then he would receive a notice of violation, right? And then there would be the actual violation that would occur in terms of having him, him come into our administrative adjudication or court.
Okay, so.
There's a, like you said, the snow that pushes the timeframe faster because it can make, you know, sort of hazard, safety concern?
Well, it's going to push the timeframe just because we're going to pursue him because he made a promise to us and we're going to push him because of that, so, right. Uh, we're just, sure.
Question for the Police Department, thank you so much for everything you do for the village. Given that the east side has a crime rating of D to an F in the east side and the west side has an A crime rating, and given all the personal overwhelming personal testimony that we've heard here over the past few months about criminal activity on the east side, has the Police Department changed their activity or response to the area in addition to the numbers that you described for officers? Has there been any other change in response to the east area?
Okay, thanks.
Well, actually, that's, higher crime rate, you know, I, I know that website has been quoted before, I, I'm not sure where that, who runs that website, but the higher crime rate is on the west side. We have, you add up all the retail thefts from the businesses and all of the things that go on at Gurnee Mills, just because of the influx of people, it's tremendously higher on the west side of town than it ever will be on the east side of town, just because of the businesses. But we have, you know, we're, because of the, the meetings with residents, we didn't know about the, the trash and people trespassing behind some of these businesses that we have now been behind three times a day, I, I'm hoping that you've seen our officers out there. But, you know, and to address the latest question about, you know, are we going to enforce traffic on Bell Plain? We've done 800 in some traffic stops in the last 12 months and I can tell you that 70% of those on the east side are Bell Plain, Florida, Magnolia, Waveland. You know, you might not see us out there, so I, and just to, you know, when we, you see an officer sitting on the side of the road, running radar, and you're like, I never see that guy pulling over a car. Well, that's because when he sees the violation, he follows the car, three blocks away, now it's turned on two different streets and that's where the traffic stop's made. So, you might not see the traffic stop, but there is 800 stops in that area a year. And we are, you know, we are investing, first of all, we gave a lot of energy to the east side, we give a lot of energy to the town in general. But now that we have our visitor-oriented policing team here, you know, in the last two months, then they're spending a lot more time addressing some of the issues that you've brought up. So, behind the buildings, the graffiti, the trash, people trespassing, you know, speeding, they, these guys have spent several different details out there, hours at a time, just stopping every car that's doing so many over, so, we're trying to make it down.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to move on to Art Stevens and Trustee Thorsonson, they're going to lead us through a process of putting up even some more things. I see they've been writing on the, on the easel, so, who should, who wants to start?
It's okay, K.T., you or me?
Oh, you can start.
Yeah, well, you need it for the recording, so.
Just when you thought it was safe. My name is, excuse me.
My name is Art Stevens, I'm a Gurnee resident just like you. I don't live on the east side, I live on the west side.
Thank you, my wife is telling me I have to use this. I'm asking people, don't leave, the hard part comes now, okay? The hard part comes now. I live on the, as I was saying, my wife and I live on the west, northwest, southwest side, we live in Heather Ridge. Two years ago, I started coming to the village hall meetings and I've come to every one that I've been in town for since then, because of an issue that came up. Could we have one conversation going at a time?
Thank you.
Thank you. I started coming two years ago to every village board meeting that I was in town for and every planning zone boarding, board, plan, planning and zoning board meeting that I was in town for, because I learned that's what I have to do as a village resident. You all are learning the same thing. So, what else did I learn during that period of time? I know, number one, I learned that Gurnee is actually a pretty responsive place. You actually can get something done here when you try. The village trustees and the staff actually care about what happens and you actually can make a difference if you're involved. Some of you wouldn't know this because you don't come all the time, but this is not an obligatory meeting for the village trustees, but every one of them are here, they're all in their stealth format because they're not dressed up, but they're here listening to what's going on. So you have a real opportunity at this point to make an impact, input and have an impact on this. The other thing that I want to tell you is, it always takes longer than you think because it's more complicated than you think. We all go along and we say, why can't we just do this? Why can't we just do that? And the world would be a great place if we could, but if we could do that, the world would also be a very difficult place to live in. So, we have to get our ideas and we have to work towards some sort of common goals and some sort of, of common view on this. I volunteered to help because I can help lead some sessions in what's called ideation, which is, we're going to develop some ideas that can be used in the future for what we do in the East Grand Corridor. Now you may have seen K.T. and I walking around, listening to some of the earlier conversations and we've been writing some of the things down. I wrote down speed bumps and I underlined it about six times because it's been brought up about six times. I think we got the information and I got, I think we got the message about speed bumps, okay? But now, what else has to happen in the East Grand Corridor? What do you want to see there? This is your opportunity, instead of having to line up and wait for somebody else to make a 10-minute rambling conversation, it's your opportunity to put down what you want to see. It can be something completely simple, it can be something completely wild, there is nothing out of bounds, there are no bad ideas. I have a whole bunch of markers here, K.T. has a whole bunch of markers and we've got cookies in the back, we have cold water in the back, so we can stay for a while if we need to, we don't have to end at nine. But now this is your opportunity as village residents to actually say, what do you want to see on the, in the East Grand Corridor? And as soon as we get done and I hand the phone, or they hand the microphone over to K.T., I'm going to go over to new business and economic growth and I'm going to write down, "good coffee shop with great pastries." Okay? So, that gives you an idea about the kinds of things that I think can go up there. What else do you want? Do you, what kind of restaurants do you want? What kind of food service do you want? What do you want to put there, to have developed there, that's going to draw people in and make that area a more viable economic area, bring in more money for the village, get more attention from everybody and create more speed bump problems, okay? K.T.?
Excellent, I love a coffee shop. So, Mayor Hood and I were just chatting real quick, when you do come up here, we'll need, this, this means Heather Galan, not one of your names, so please put your name here and you could also stop off and see Mayor Hood and give like a phone number or something. You could also follow up, as another person asked earlier, with an email to villageboard@gurnee-il.us and say, I mentioned the coffee shop, I'd really like, you know, and give us a little bit more information, because we want to follow up on all these. And just to get everybody going in another direction, just like Art did, I'm going to write something here because in our core group, we've been talking about who's going to maintain it, right? Those of you that are part of the core team, after we beautify, correct, put weed killer on, whatever, who's going to maintain it? So, we don't have that solutioned yet and that brings me to the last step, we aren't looking for solutions, it's a statement, what I want. You could see we put all the statements in one line and it's readable, legible. All right, come get your markers.
Who wants a marker? Okay. Markers, we got.